Action.
Thank you so much, Ally.
You're welcome.
Todd, thanks for being here with me.
Thank you so much, Dave.
What would you consider to be your three most important accomplishments as a city council member?
You know, it's there's, there's a lot to choose from. I'm going to pick the very first thing that I worked on. Whenever I ran for city council in 2020, we knocked on 10,556 doors and heavily knocked in the Rocky Brook area Camelot. And just throughout our door knocking, there was a constant noise that was coming from the West Fraser Sawmill. And whenever we door knocked in Camelot, it was, that was the number one issue. And it was an issue that had been happening for years and nobody had any solution or any real relief to it. So I talked to him and I told him I was going to be persistent about it. I was going to make sure that, you know, I followed up and asked questions, talked in the middle, see what we could do. But that's easy to do as a candidate. Whenever I first came into office and I had my first meeting with Mayor Fuller, that was the very first thing I talked about. I said, we, you know, this is a constant thing and it wasn't just going until 7:00 PM. It was going until 3:00 in the morning.
Oh, wow.
And sometimes it went 24/7. They were COVID was happening. They were trying to make up for a lot of lost time and manpower. And it wasn't, it wasn't just me. Mayor Fuller is a, is a great unifier and galvanizer. And he got with myself, the economic development team, talking to people at the Sawmill and, and bringing us together and trying to find a solution for it. We were able to find a solution. It's all, all the credit goes to West Fraser, the Sawmill. And what they did was their debarking tumbler was the thing that was making the most noise. So built a facility around it and capsulating it to, to keep a lot of the noise. And it's, the difference is overnight, you know, it's one of those things where it happened very early on in my term. And I think people have been used to living with so much peace and silence at this point that they forget that it was ever an issue. But that was the very first thing that I tackled. That's one of my proudest accomplishments because it
Very tangible.
Yes, very first thing. The other thing is, the second thing I would say is the roundabout at West Point Parkway and Sportsplex Parkway. If you all remember before then, it was just a T and the crossroad and, and no one could, you know, get to the Sportsplex from the interstate unless going around. But whenever they created that passway through the Sportsplex Parkway, it created a pretty dangerous situation. There were only two as a two-way stop on the interstate and Sportsplex Parkway side. And it was no stop for anyone on West Point Parkway. And we have so many accidents there.
I remember.
You know, at that time I reached out to Chief Shane Healy, the chief of the police department. And I got a police report on from 2014 to 2022, how many accidents? There were 40 accidents there and within that timeframe. And, um, you know, but tragically, um, there were two deaths there. There was one that happened in April of 2020 before I took office. And then there was another accident that happened there in March of 2022. And, ah, you know, I had been asking for a four-way stop there, but I was given reasons of why it couldn't happen. I remember the day that the accident happened where the gentleman died. I heard it from my house. I live in Hidden Lakes.
Oh, boy.
And I, you know, I'd emailed the mayor the Wednesday before I talked to him on the phone the Friday before. And that accident happened on a Monday. It was an 85-year-old man. Uh, he was transported to, um, the hospital in Columbus and he died a week later. And for someone like me who's been in combat as lead soldiers, that's, um, been killed in combat. It's, that's a, that's a tough loss to take. I was, I remained persistent on it for about a year. I was calling the city hall. I was talking to the mayor. I was talking to President Eddie Smith and trying to get some resolution there. We had, the traffic circle was planning on coming, so I had asked for an expedited engineering plan. So we could get that rolling a little bit quicker, but more importantly, that four-way stop. And, um, so I called Eddie and I told him I had my limit with it. And by that afternoon, they had a four-way stop there. And since that day, there haven't, hasn't been a, a serious accident with an injury included in it. And I'll just put it this way, the last three traffic accidents that happened in that, on that intersection, all three vehicles came to a stop on the roof. I mean, it was very, very dangerous. So I was very, very proud whenever we were able to accomplish that. And of course the roundabout came in and people aren't happy about roundabouts.
I love roundabouts.
They were happy about that one. They were happy about that one and the engineering team did a great job. That's again, a collaborative success for, for Ward Five and, and really what we're doing and what we're trying to create. The third thing is the new addition to the outdoor pool for the Sportsplex. I grew up, um, in Illinois, uh, being a lifeguard and learning that responsibility from a young age. And, um, I know that I work out at the Sportsplex a lot and do a lot of swimming. And I know that it's easier to swim outside than it is inside. And to have that ability to have more opportunity for families to go from, you know, parents to lay out or teenagers. And to, to also have a pool and a larger splash pad, it was a great addition. You know, I took the opportunity, uh, both George Allen from Ward One and I, um, got together and, and talked about it. Because we were the two council members that had, uh, you know, a public pool in their wards. And so we partnered together. We went to the, the aquatic feasibility studies. We went to the meetings. Um, you know, we were heavily involved in the process and we were able to find not just a success for one of our wards, but for both of our wards. So it was kind of like a win, win, win for us. And, um, so yeah, I, those, those, those are the ones that stick up on my mind of my, my top three successes. But ask me, ask me next term. I'm, I'm sure we'll, we'll have some more. There's things we're working on, but they're not done yet.
We're here at the Opelika Chamber and of course your wife Ally's the boss.
Yes, sir.
What kind of synergies arise between you being on the city council and her being in charge of the chamber? And then the follow-up question to that would be, are there any sort of conflicts of interest where like you have to vote on the budget for the chamber? Do you end up abstaining on those votes?
Yeah. I mean, that's a great question and it's a question that I get all the time. I think people are just kind of curious of how our lives kind of evolve and work around this and also the conflict of interest part. So, um, of course Ally and I, we, we found each other, our love for each other and leadership in the Lord. So, uh, she was the student government president at Lake Land College in Mattoon, Illinois. And I was just a new student wanting to be on the student government. And, um, I eventually ran for student trustee and we just kind of, um, connected with our love of leadership. And so I knew that, we both knew that no matter where we went in life, we, we were, we had our own dreams. But we also made it an important part to help each other accomplish our dreams. And we, um, have, you know, displayed that in our community with how we work and how we work together especially. You know, um, I tell people all the time, I'm a city councilman twice a month, you know, on the first and third Tuesdays and from about six to around eight. And during those times, I take my job very, very seriously. You know, with knowing the, um, the hurdles that come up with having a chamber president as my wife and being a city councilman for a municipality. It's that public service component, uh, there are clear lines. So I had reached out to President Eddie Smith beforehand. We had talked about all this. As an elected leader, you're more than likely going to have conflict of interests come up. I mean, take Auburn, for example, um, you know, the, the chamber president is, you know, uh, one is a chamber president and the other one is a, is a state senator. So this, this comes into account, but you also can't sacrifice one for the other. And, and that's just the pursuit of democracy. So, um, I reached out to President Smith and I wanted to make sure that I did not have to abstain from the budget. We only have two main jobs and, and as a city council members, one is to approve the budget. And the other one is to appoint people to citizens to boards and committees within the city. So, um, the contract that comes in through the chamber, um, obviously it is, you know, concerns the payment and, um, the money that goes into the chamber of commerce. So on that I do abstain. Uh, I follow very closely with the Ethics Commission for the state of Alabama. So whenever we do that, I do abstain from it. I don't, I don't take part in any deliberation or conversation. But furthermore, after the vote is done, I always request that our city clerk sends a signed, um, copy of the resolution to the State Ethics Commission so that they have it on file and that there is, you know, there's a paper trail there. And I tell people all the time, you know, we have certain programs like 20 under 40 that comes in. And they're asking for discretionary funds from the city council members, which we get $10,000 each year annually. And on those votes, even though it's coming from my funds and I do, you know, agree with it, I still abstain from that. Because I can see that it going into a general fund or how it's allocated, that it could come into question. And it's not just about where the money is going or for that resolution. You got to understand as an elected leader, it's about the optics.
Sure.
It's about the way that sees someone.
We live in a world of perception.
Yes, sir. And, um, I'm always, I'm a person of high integrity and so is Ally. So we, we had these conversations going into it. And, you know, it's funny to sit around the, the dinner table for Ally and I. Our conversations are mainly, you know, a lot more political and just what's going on on our community. But I tell people all the time, the, the unique thing about Ally and I is we come from, you know, Illinois, which is 12 hours away. It's just us. We don't have family here. We don't have brothers, sisters, grandmothers, cousins, uncles, no one. So it's important to both of us that we support each other. You know, um, Ally is my safety net. Um, and that's my relationship advice for everyone. Find someone that you can go through life and be scared in the pursuits that you want to pursue. And she's been there with me throughout the whole process of running for office and getting elected and, and just staying in touch with our, with my constituents. But also the successes that the chamber has brought is I have, other than just being a loyal supporter, um, it is a hundred percent her. I mean, the, the ideas, the, the brain work that goes into it, the team that she's created. I'm a, I'm a big supporter of it. I tell people all the time, uh, I was the one who first got involved with the chamber back in 2017. I became an ambassador. And in 2019, I think 2020, um, Ally became the president, the chamber president. So unfortunately I, I told her, I was like, I'll step away from ambassador and, and look at some other pursuits. But she, she's done a great job, you know? And we're, we're just, everyone in the community sees a lot of what we do and how we work, how we are in public is how we are at home. And, um, we just, you know, probably wearing different clothes. But it's, it's about the love and commitment that we have for each other. And we, you know, a lot of people are going to have opinions on it and if they do, they do. But, um, our record stands for what it is. And, um, she's at every city council meeting because it's, one, she supports me, but also it's in her contract with the city that she needs to be present. So I benefit from both sides of it, just getting to have her there. But, um, she is an advocate for our small and local businesses here. So, um, having her there and having her understand what we're doing from a municipal standpoint is just better. It puts our, uh, local businesses in a better position.
Let's talk a little bit more about small businesses. I've heard from a few that they wish they would get more of the love like we dole out when we're trying to attract a big employer to town. Do you have any thoughts on whether we need to do more for small business and what we might do?
Well, I think the, you know, from the city side, what we can do is, you know, the administration and the mayor has talked about it before with, um, we want city, we want businesses to come to Opelika because they, they love Opelika and they know that they can thrive here. Sometimes whenever you have incentives, like that's just what they're seeking, what the, can they get the best, you know, the best buck in the community that they're going into. And Mayor Fuller obviously has done a tremendous job in, in growing the business and culture and also the industry side. I think we can, um, as a city council member, uh, I'm supportive of the initiatives that the chamber puts on. And also the, the initiatives that Opelika Main Street puts on. You know, I just sat through, um, one of the, it was a partnership between the city of Opelika, the revenue department and the chamber. And they were explaining the, you know, the, how the tax incentives, the policies, the, you know, the manpower, how you get your business license. And they had about an hour-long class and they had a panel of, of five different people that, including Matt Mosley, the city planner, um, Lilly Finley, the revenue officer. And they were talking about the importance of how you go through this process. I, I know that those things are beneficial because that's probably one of the most cumbersome parts of getting your business license in Opelika. There's lots of things that they need to check, the zoning, where your business is going to go, um, how it's going to, you know, operate. Is the, the building requirements, does it make it safe? So there, there is a lot of double checking and that's for, for safety reasons. And just making sure that the success of the business is going to be, you know, fruitful. You know, they want to do everything they can on the front end so that business has less to worry about on the back end, whenever they do open their doors. But the, for what the chamber does and some of the opportunities that they offer in marketing and those, those can only be reached by a chamber of commerce. You know, I mean, those are the specialties that they are able to bring in. I know the city has partnered with OIDA, the Opelika Industrial Development Authority and providing small business grants for, for new up and coming businesses. I think we, um, can do more with entrepreneurship and kind of, people have lots of ideas of what they want to start with the business. But, um, you know, duplication of resources is, is hard and also services will create a business to not have as much boom as it needs to. And, you know, competition is good, but in some areas, you know, focusing on what you're doing and how you can serve that business better is, those things can kind of get torn between, I know this person or I know that. So I think we can do more in entrepreneurship and support of our, um, of our businesses.
University right down the road might have an entrepreneurship program.
Absolutely. And I know, you know, I worked at the Community Foundation. We use them for a lot of like marketing, um, nonprofit event stuff. And you're right, um, there, there is that opportunity there for, for that as well, which I, I think is, is something good for us to look into and take part in. And it's just looking at all avenues. We look very much on what we can, everything that we do and all the, the opportunities that we provide are for the businesses, are for the people and are for the tourists that come here.
There's a fellow running for one of the other wards who's talked about the, what the city charges for an alcohol license and an alcohol tax being astronomical relative to what the state charges. I haven't researched that myself, but is that accurate?
Um, I'm not sure on what the difference between what the state charges. You know, we, we had an issue with, um, one of our local businesses early on, um, in the term, I think somewhere in 2020, 2021. Cracker Barrel wanted a business license. And people see Cracker Barrel as mainly a, you know, a kind of a family restaurant. And we, you know, I, I was for it for, I, I'm a small, small government type of person. So I believe that if someplace wants an alcohol license and, you know, there are no issues legally or through law enforcement, that everyone should have the opportunity to grow their business. So I was for it. There were a couple of council members that were against it or that needed more information. So we required them to come back before the council. But, um, you know, and I've had other businesses that have asked me about the, um, the opportunity to get a business license or the alcohol license and how that would affect their business. And each one has to seek that, you know, individually. But, um, I, I think it's fair. I, I, I know that for what we see in the, you know, what provides to our community, the law enforcement and, and everything and the oversight, I, I do think it's fair, but I'm also, I haven't compared it to the state side.
Gotcha. So you talked about Gary Fuller and, you know, most people would say Gary's done a good job. I certainly would, I imagine. Well, you did a little while ago.
Yes, sir.
Is there anything you think that the new mayor, regardless of who it is, should do differently?
I, I, I mean, Mayor Fuller has done a great job for the city of Opelika, as has, um, have Mayor Barbara Patton and, and Mayor Bobby Freeman. In the 21 years that Mayor Fuller has been serving as the top executive in our city, he has created a substantial amount of perpetuity for Opelika. And we're all beneficiaries of that. You know, with that said, I believe that the next mayor has an opportunity to lead from a more civic-minded or citizen-minded approach. Particularly in the way that information is shared and how feedback is received. We need to be creating space in our community that allows for more community input, um, before the decisions are made rather than afterwards. I would also, I also think that the, the next mayor has, I would like to see them take an opportunity of engaging the full city council. There are, there are times whenever, um, I feel like the information is siloed or we don't have as much as we need at that time to go forward. And sometimes you see that at some of our council meetings and we'll table something to get more information here or there. But, um, I, I would like to see more leadership and engagement through the council without feeling like we're stepping on toes or overreaching.
It's a great answer. Along those lines, um, in terms of communication between the city and the citizens, I think you just said there's room for improvement. And you talked earlier about appointing citizens to boards. I feel like there's a lot of talent locally that would love to step forward and serve. But they don't really know when these things come up. Is there ways that people can be made aware of these opportunities more?
Absolutely. You know, we have 27 boards within the city. Um, I, I think roughly around 110, you know, positions on boards or committees within the city. There is obviously an opportunity there. The number one issue that we run into as council members is whenever, uh, someone's term has expired on a board or committee, then the typical thing is to go to that person, would you like to serve for an additional three, four, two years, whatever it, um, you know, it allows. And, uh, they usually say yes, because they love being a part of the city and doing this. Early on, I had talked about, um, term limits for boards and committees. I know it's a, you know, uh, an issue that, you know, some people like and some people don't like. But I will tell you this, there is a waiting list and last time I checked, it was around 60 names long. And every year we put 20 new names on the list. That comes out of our 20 under 40 program ran by the chamber. I was a part of that program in 2016, 2017. And whenever they complete it, they sign out the volunteer list, tell what, you know, you get a list of boards and committees, which ones you would most likely to serve on. And then you submit it to the city clerk. And those lists grow and grow and grow. This really came to my attention whenever we had, um, I would say a recent graduate of 20 under 40. I think she was around somewhere in 2010. And we just reported and pointed her to her first board a couple of years ago. The first board that I served on was the Metropolitan Planning Organization Citizen Advisory Committee. And it's a long name, but, um, it was my very first board. And, you know, we work with the Lee Russell Council of Governments and they're planning their transportation needs. And I enjoy that type of board because I can nerd out on the budget and the numbers and, and looking at everything. And that's how I got my real, my passion for wanting to serve in, in municipal government. So I'm, I'm an advocate for boards and committees. I have asked many times, talked to the mayor about it. Eddie Smith, I've, President Smith, I've talked to him numerous times about it. And I believe that it would be fruitful for our community because that is the way we get people's foot in the door. For them to better understand how our community works rather than, you know, we need to do this better, we need to that, do that better. It allows a hyper-focused look into whatever board that they're on, which is a niche in our community that helps it all flourish. And I think those opportunities are great. What I worry the most about is someone, what would have happened if there weren't any opportunities for me to serve on the NPO?
Right.
And where else would we have looked? If there are no opportunities here and people have the passion for it, they're going to seek it elsewhere. And we're going to have that issue with trying to keep people in our community. And additionally, we have people that have been serving 25 years on some of these boards. And that's a, that's a long time for one voice. And I know that we have the, the want and the need for it. And I just want to make sure that we're doing everything we can from a city council perspective to provide the opportunity for people to, to serve in these capacities.
And if somebody's been doing it for 25 years, I guess I'd rather see them step aside and put a 25-year-old in that seat. Get some youthful energy and innovative ideas.
It's tough. I mean, cause you're trying to navigate this from understanding that this person wants to serve. And they, they have the education and know how to do it, but for that person to gently be like, okay, well, can we do this? And I've tried to get some people on some boards and maybe asking someone to roll off and, you know, it turns bad. And, you know, that person is just more entrenched to, to be there. And I send a, a email on an anniversary every year to one of my constituents. And the anniversary email is, I'm still working on this for you. Because we're still trying to get her appointed to, um, the Opelika Industrial Development Authority, which is a big board.
Yeah.
Which is a big board, but she has the understanding, she has the education, she has, she's worked in industry and patiently, patiently waiting. And but that, those, I remember all that. I, I try to make sure people know that just because it's not right now, doesn't mean it's never.
Right. I guess what some boards will do with somebody who's been long-serving is roll them into an emeritus role.
Right.
Where they can still attend the meetings, participate in the discussions, but they're ex officio and they don't vote. So you're not disenfranchising them, you're keeping them involved, but you're creating an opportunity for somebody else.
Right, right. Absolutely. And it creates more, you know, just more diversity, more, uh, everyone, we have, you know, we used to be a community where a lot of people, you know, were, had been here for a long time or had lived there all their lives. But just the way that technology, transportation and everything grows, we have more people that are coming here from outside. I mean, for Ally and I, we're, we are ingrained in this community, but we were not born and raised here. We understand that. And that's, that's, you know, that's a tough nut to crack. But I think the trust and, and what we do and, and the products that we have put out and the areas of the community that we have served. I think that is goodwill and we, we know that we are ambassadors for other people that come after us.
Cool. So we've probably agreed on everything we've talked about so far, but it can't last forever.
Okay, okay.
So let's talk about growth relative to infrastructure. The tailor, for example, I'm not a fan. The traffic was already bad there in front of the police station. You add what, 300 units there? There's no additional. I mean, there's entrance and exit sort of, um, lanes, but not, not really it, a greater road infrastructure there. Correct me if I'm wrong, that thing passed, the rezoning passed three to two and you were one of the three. So I guess I'm wondering, you know, do we always have to have infrastructure lag growth? Or, you know, can we think ahead and, and do these things in advance? Or, you know, are, are people like me and others just doomed to suffer through traffic so developers can make a lot of money?
Yeah. Um, well, to kind of give you a little bit of behind the scenes, because everyone deserves to know it. You know, October, I think this might've been 2022, um, the, uh, Councilman George Allen and I sat down with John Marsh. And we, you know, he gave us, you know, told us what he wanted to talk about and kind of gave us the idea of it. And I had two concerns. I told him straight out. I was like, I see two issues with this. One is 10th Street. The second is community involvement. If you do not get the community involved in this, they are going to be livid. And I can only do that and give those warnings is what I know, you know? And whenever they, you know, they went through the process and they came to it, I didn't see any community involvement. I didn't see any, you know, fix or, you know, focus on how we're going to do 10th Street. I'm also not an engineer, you know, and I, I understand and appreciate that. But when it does come before our desk, then on city council, then that is where it becomes my purview. And so I was, I held out for a while. Um, there were three things that I was concerned with. The first thing, exactly what you're talking about was 10th Street. The second thing was the infrastructure for sewer water, everything within that area. And the third part of it was people were unhappy with the way that it looked.
Now, in fairness, I'll say it looks better in real life than it did in the pictures.
Right, right. You, you're right. And with that, I knew that there were going to be two sides of this. Either they, or three, either they weren't going to change it at all, they were going to change it to make it better, or they were going to change it to make it worse. And it seemed like they went to making it worse because it would just seem like a very plain white. And it seemed like they went to making it worse because it would just seem like a very plain white building. And you're right, it does look beautiful. But with the other two, I can't do anything with the aesthetics, right? That's not really our side of what we can do from council and we have to look at the legal side of it. What are the legal ramifications of trying to keep a development like this from coming in when they have all right from zoning and, and all this. This was also kind of done backwards. So when we were looking about this, it was usually the rezoning happens and then the development further goes on. But they kind of front loaded it with, hey, this development's coming and then the rezoning. So everything was contentious in that rezoning part. You know, everything, that's, that's where it all held at was the rezoning of this. Cause once they do that, they can build it. So we were trying to, you know, thread that needle between what we, what our job is in the government and democracy, what we can provide. So I focused on the two things and that's traffic. And the other side was the infrastructure. I asked the city, can you provide us with an idea of what this road is going to look like? I asked for an additional lane in there. We weren't given anything. We weren't given any new information. We weren't given any new drawings. We just got this black and white kind of, you know, road thing and a picture and we just, that was it. On the infrastructure, we were told that it was tested and it was going forward and everything. As a, as a council member, you cannot, you don't have the ability to go back in time. But I'm clear with my constituents. I am, I, I was sitting in a meeting and I overheard someone telling another person about the process. And how the reservations that we had weren't valid and the information that we were given, they didn't do anything extra to suffice any of our worries. That's first person. That's me sitting there listening to this happen. And I felt duped, you know, I felt like it wasn't, we weren't given, the people weren't given everything. We're not allowed to go back and, you know, go back and change anything or anything like that, but it does, it, it does hurt because I'm like, we, that's the way we make our decisions. We, we need everything there. And we weren't given very much. It was very pushed by the mayor. The mayor was very much for the tailor. That's very well known. So that makes it even harder because everything gets kind of thrown into this and it seemed like I was in the middle. Because there were two against and there were two for. And it would, that's why I was trying to ask all these questions to get a lot in there. But it, it is a beautiful project, you know, with everything that was going on. There were lots of meetings. We were trying to figure out how long does John Marsh have control of the property? You know, he was saying thirty years, but people are saying, once you sell it, it's, he's out. You know, and I wasn't given a straight answer by him and it took some time and after a meeting, I was like, you gotta shoot me straight. I, I need to tell my people something. But it all came from a lot of what was going on in other wards. I talked to a lot of ward five people about it and we had some for and some against. I have one constituent, I knocked on her door and she said, that's the only thing we disagree on. And I said, I, I understand that. I, I appreciate it. But, you know, we had meetings and we had talked about this and and everything that we did trying to get the information out there was the best thing that we could do, but we also, you know, have a, now have a thriving downtown and we need walkable distance and it came into how many apartment spaces and what's the, how much need is there? And it's hard to say, okay, we have this many people, we're growing by this much and these, these apartments are going to be left open. And I've seen it in other communities when I worked in intelligence for, as a civilian in Huntsville, they were expecting a BRAC to happen and a change of, you know, one of the commands to come to Huntsville. And it was slow trickle. They didn't know that they'd been trickling in for ten years. You know, they thought it was going to be overnight. So I know these worries can happen and for the, I talked heavily with Councilman George Allen, that was his ward. Relying on a lot of how comfortable he felt with it, but also we are a community of ideas and growth. And there are opportunities that come with this that we just don't know yet. I don't regret, I don't, I can't regret anything, but I, I, I regret how it happened. And the information, I wish I would have pushed more. But when you're sitting in a meeting and you have these experts telling you that this, this and this, and you're just looking at a black and white piece of paper, what else can you ask for, right? I mean, it's partially there. They weren't given any development drawing. Sure enough, not what the, you know, what the outside looked like and the idea of it. We could have been given that with the road. And I do worry about that because the number one complaint I get from older constituents in Opelika is Second Avenue. So, because we can't grow out there, you know, we can't expand very much because it's pretty narrow. So my biggest fear was creating a, a second one. So I talked to a lot of people and, you know, where do you, how do you take your kids to school? You know, if you're going through that area, are you mitigating that by going down other roads? Are you going down McCoy? How, how are you doing this? And it seemed like a lot of hit or miss and not knowing what, we don't know what we don't know. And for the benefit of what it brings in our community, we were just trying to wrestle that. But that's, that's what this job is. It's, if this could be handled on any other level, it would be. It wouldn't come to us and we, but that's what we're tasked with is having trust from our constituents that we're doing the research, we're asking the questions, we're going to the meetings. And, and being as impartial as we can, but as informative as we can. So I, I, I agree and I, I take, I, I, that, it's, that was a hard one. I've had people come up and talk to me in public about it. And I, I, I'm a little hurt, you know, I'm just, it's still a little, it's a sore subject for me because some of the people are like, you know, I'm very appreciative, you know, and those are developers, investors in Opelika and I understand, but they don't, they're, they are not seeing it from the lens that we are of the people. And that's what most matters because on page nineteen of the budget, it has the chain of command for the city of Opelika. And there is no one above the people. The people are above the mayor, they're above us, they're all, they're, they are the top of the list. So that, you know, when you know that you felt like you've let some people down and, but others are happy, it's, it's not something that, you know, we go around skipping the streets.
It'll be interesting to see what happens because my sense is there's not, occupancy is not that high at the moment. But if it does get full someday, it'll be really interesting to see what happens with that road.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I agree. It's, it's something that's, I think is on all of our radars and our city does a great job with a lot of the management and, you know, the, the needs of it. But the problem is, is the immediacy of it. You know, I mean, we can plan out and well, if this does get bad and we can do this. And there has been a lot of work that's been done in that area, but you can't negate the fact that it bottlenecks, you know, and that you've got businesses sitting next to sidewalks. Or another piece of property and you, you're going to have to ask for a lot of permission to make any type of changes in that area and that's tough.
Right. Now, the flip side, as you, you noted, if I'm, I think the guy's name is Jody who owns Chuck's Barbecue. If I'm him, I'm thrilled, right? Hundreds of potential customers now are, you know, twenty five steps from my restaurant.
I, I hope. I, I know that it, you know, it affects those businesses the most, you know, with just the traffic flow and and everything. I, I, for me, I'm kind of, you know, when, just when you said that, kind of looking at me like, I just, I don't know how to feel about it because I know that it was so contentious and I really just, I really feel that if there would have been a little bit, just a little bit of participation from the community, getting it out there and just doing some of that, I feel like we would probably have more advocates, but when it pops up on you overnight, like this was just put on Facebook. And then there was a
It was a lynch mob.
It was. And you know, it was about two, three months after we had had our meeting in October. And when you, you know, no news is good news, I guess. And then when that popped up, I just kind of shook my head and I thought, oh boy, like this is, this is exactly what I was worried about. And the people are worried exactly what I thought they would be worried about, which you can't, you can't blame them. I mean, this is, this is who we do this for, you know, everyone here together. And I felt like people just didn't feel like they had a choice in the matter. And it's something that I carry with me, but it's also the experience of going through that, that I know, I know what to ask, I know what to, you know, and this is, this is all, this is all a part of that. Elections are comprehensive.
Let's talk a little bit about Fox Chase where I live. We've struggled to get help from the city with stormwater runoff. Our lake collects from a huge watershed and there's been developers. I, I sound like I'm anti-developer. I'm really not. But there's been developers upstream, including the one who built my house, that haven't done a great job with silt fences and all of that ends up on our doorstep. And at least according to the homeowners association, they've approached the appropriate person at the city. The claim was they talked to our city councilman. I don't know if that was you or the person before you. But it's an ongoing issue and I guess you're going to be out in a couple of days and I'm hoping to be able to show you exactly what we have going on there. We've also had problems with a faulty sewage lift station and we're on Opelika Sewer. If we get heavy rains, we get some flooding from a sewage station, which is a problem because, well, I mean, it's obviously a problem, but it's an extra problem because some people like to eat fish out of the lake. And some people have asked me, hey, should I eat the bass? I said, I wouldn't eat those bass, you know, because sewage is leaked in there. So I guess, wh- what should Fox Chase be doing to get stronger support from the city?
Well, the, you know, I talked to you about this whenever I called you about setting this up. And I watched the, the previous two videos that we've done. And I immediately, I, I mean, my heart's on my chest and I'm just like, oh my, have I missed something? Cause my wife knows that when I miss something, I'm, I give myself a hard time for a long time. Just how can I, how, how could I have missed this? So I went through my emails. I, I didn't have anything from, from Fox Chase. I reached out to the, the administration to say, hey, is there, is this an ongoing issue and what can you tell me about it? And, and I shared that with you, but the, they didn't have anything on there. I don't know who it was, but I, I mean, I would, I'll take the blame if, if y'all need to, but so I reached, I've done some work on this in the last couple of days since I found this out. I, I know that the administration is working on it with Jeff Kapelman. I heard from the engineering department, Scott Parker, and also Matt Mosley with City Planning. And the mayor is very aware of it. They're going to be checking on like the silt fencing area. And what Jeff is not, I don't know what's going to happen, but Jeff said he would look at it. And, but this is a common complaint that we get from a lot of people. The, so I'm going to answer this kind of that way. So we're looking at the issue. So it's not, not all is lost. But we're going to see how we can, what we can do to help with that. Development or the development potential areas in Opelika, that's the number one complaint that I usually get from constituents. That, you know, they always say that's protected wetland and that's the, that's the biggest lie that developers tell people because it's not. And if you do not own the property behind or around your house, it probably will get developed. Opelika is growing. But I also, my wife and I fell for that when our first house we lived in. And now, you know, then we had a neighbor overlooking our kitchen, you know, so those, those are the common issues that we deal with, but I do know that there can be more that's done. There needs to be more oversight for our developers and what they're doing and how they're working. For example, Anderson Lakes, they're, excuse me, yeah, Anderson Lakes neighborhood. There's another neighborhood above it that's getting, you know, usually there, a couple of years ago, they were getting a lot of, I mean, the roads were just red with the silt. And then they got a pond a little bit down further that is always muddy, always red, never clear. And I, I can understand those frustrations. And whenever I went out there, there's a big thirty foot mound pile of dirt. Well, if it stands longer than fourteen days, then they need to grasp that. So, you know, it prevents any erosion and runoff. And those things are seen whenever, you know, hey, this is an issue, having someone go out and look at it. Hey, we found these issues and problems. This is what we can do. But, so I know that there needs to be probably, there needs to be more of that. We have another issue in South Unaroyle with the development between Creekstone and Southlake. They went in there, it was a new developer, a mother and son, and then they found out that there's either a granite vein or something right there. So they've been doing for three years, just dynamite blasting, just, you know, jackhammering all from eight to five. And it drives people nuts. And there's just been a lot of runoff. It's just not a lot.
I'm pretty sure that ends up in our lake too, if you look at a topography map.
Yes, sir. So what we have is, you know, we reached out to ADEM, there's been an ADEM and the engineering side, they handle all this. They do a great job. But the, it's still, it's still ongoing. I went and knocked there this past week and it was tough. You know, people are like, what can be done? And I, I tell them it's working, we're working on it, we're working on it. But it also gives us areas to like, how can we work with our noise ordinance? Because obviously that's a noise that's getting, getting talked about. It's on people's minds every single day. Any stay at home moms, the husbands were telling me when they get home, they're just, almost don't want to go home, you know, because they're just, everyone is on edge and it affects.
Noise will do that.
Yeah, it affects people's personal lives. That's what this all is. At this level, everything is personal. You see it every single day. It's always in the front of your mind. So that is a common complaint for the development issues that I, I still want to work on and still are working on in several other neighborhoods with the same issue. As crazy as it can be, but, you know, we are growing and people are buying land and doing all this. We just need to make sure we're still keeping our existing residents and community and neighborhoods in mind whenever we're doing this, not just, well, this is approved, they can do whatever they want and you just have to deal with it. Cause once the homes are built, the rain doesn't go away. It just goes off the rooftops. And that's our, that seems to be a lot more than it does if it's just raining normally. The other side that, the other thing that you talked about was the lift stations. You know, we have thirty three lift stations in the city of Opelika. And for a city of our size, I'm not an engineer. But there's a lot that goes into it. I mean, you know, the thermal dynamics of what you have to do and we approve a lot of the, the, any assistance on any of the lift stations, any of the work or revisions that needs to be done and the upkeep and the maintenance on them. But whenever you do that and you have thirty three lift stations that are all talking differently to each other, it's sometimes when you tinker with one, the other one goes up or down and that causes a problem, goes the other one. So whenever they were developing Opelika and kind of growing it, it seemed like, okay, well, this, this is what's needed in this area. However, if one lift station is not doing the work, it's going to affect y'all at Fox Chase. And if this one's doing good, then you might have better lower water pressure or just more issues down the road. I can tell you this and, you know, I'm dealing with another issue out in the Westridge neighborhood. Is I talked to ESG Director John Gwynn yesterday. I was talking to him out in the parking lot of Westridge Ballfields. And he was giving me a, a really good understanding of what we've kind of, what we're working with in the city of Opelika and the, and the work that they're doing to make sure that we understand how our city is speaking to us. And the residential growth, the industry, the commercial side and what the impacts are when it comes to, you know, city sewer and water. So they were doing a, I think it's the Northeast Basin Sewer Study. And it's kind of grown into a lot more and they were doing the Northeast because of the industrial park. Those currently, the, those sewers go down, you know, the sewer lines go down through residential neighborhoods and we've experienced some issues there. But looking at ways that they can bypass that to go straight to, you know, the, the water, the northeast or the east water treatment plant off of North Unaroyle Road that would completely bypass some of those neighborhoods. Because what happens is just, you know, the sewer system and the, the capacity that they have, they start to affect the smell and some of the things that happen in our neighborhoods and it's a common complaint. This is, these are issues that have been ongoing. They were ongoing before I became city councilman and they're still going on, ongoing now. And we're going to be having a constituent meeting out there at Westridge here soon. And I'm going to be informing the, you know, with John Swetman and John Gwynn. And letting them talk to the constituents and getting an understanding because I have a lady, Miss Alitha Taylor. And she has this smell that comes up through her pipes. And she has seventy one years old and a, a cancer survivor and some nights she has been sleeping in her car. Because the smell is so bad in their house. So that just broke my heart immediately. And I mean, I stop by her house every week. So, um, that just broke my heart immediately. And I mean, I stop by her house every week and give her an update. So, and I was at her house last Sunday and just sniffing around, you know, because. One half, part of her house, it smells and the other half, part of her house, nothing. And it's, it's hard to really to, uh, find an idea where it is. But, you know, I told her, she's like, well, people were out here a couple of months ago and smelling it. I said, listen, three boats noses are better than one. If we can really get an idea and if I know what this smells like and I can be able to describe it. Rather than using someone else's words, that's what I want. I wanna go out there. I wanna see it for myself, smell it for myself in that case. But more importantly, I told her, I said, Ms. Leitha, if at any point you need to go get out of your house or anything like that. I need to be your first call. You need to call me. We, we will put you up in a hotel myself. We will invite you over to our house. You can live in. You know, stay in one of our spare bedrooms, but at no means is she can, should she be living in her car? But the, that is the extent of, of some of the problems that people can, can experience. And, um, you know, you wanna be like, why didn't you call me? But we give our opportunity for people to have our number and to call us all the time. But it's just one of those things when you're going through that, that's the last thing on your mind is, oh, I need to call my councilman that gave me a Christmas card. So it's hard to, to really think along those lines whenever you're just worried about, am I ever going to be able to live normal again? So, uh, we do whatever we can and the city does whatever it possibly can to make sure that our constituents or the residents are. Are not as impacted, but this is a growing thing. This is, as, as Opalika grows and as we understand how it grows with us. We're doing the right things with doing the sewer study. That's going to, that's going to affect the capacity in every single neighborhood. And a better gauge of when something goes wrong, that it doesn't go terribly wrong. It just goes wrong enough that we can, okay, we, this is an easy fix, not a year, month long fix. But we're gonna still look into that. It's not, it's, it's on the radar. Um, and I appreciate y'all talking about it because that, that's what I do. I mean, it's, I have a spreadsheet, it's red, yellow and green, you know. Hasn't been, hasn't been looked at, is currently in the process and has been fixed. So putting that on there and something that I can follow up with and continually, you know, just ask people as they're, hey, how's that going along? And, and we have great city departments where they keep us informed.
To wrap things up, what do you see as the number one need for Opalika? And how can all of us contribute to meeting that need?
The, the, I think the number one need is the, is the communication. The communication of the constituents, it's communication of our city, it's of our city departments. You know, as a city councilman and, and hearing the complaints from the, from the citizens, sometimes I go to the city and I'm, I say, well, you know, this is the complaint. This is what they're complaining about. And they're like, oh, well, it's not that, it's this and it shows me they've known about it. And the fact that I don't know about it is really hard for me because I, I, I'm uninformed at that point. So I definitely, the communication between our council and between our city government and our administration is crucial. I cannot be, I, I mean, more straightforward than that. That is so crucial. Because when things are getting fixed or are getting looked at, we need to know what that process is. So we can give that feedback back to the residents so that they know that it just wasn't spoken to avoid and nothing's happening. That there's a process and it's getting worked on and they're pa- they're willing to be patient if they know that they need to be patient. Uh, on the other side is for our, our residents, you know. Whenever I first got elected, my biggest, the three big things still, communication, transparency and accessibility. And one thing that we wanted to, to do, and I say we, is because it takes all of us, is the, um, putting all. We put all our agendas on Facebook. If you wanna get the agenda, you can go to the city website and go to the city clerk's side and go to the minutes and agendas. And then download it if you'd like, but it's just easier as you're perusing Facebook at night or, you know, during the day, this is what they're doing, let me see what they're doing. And we get a lot of feedback with that. I tell people all the time, if you have any questions, please give me a call and people do. My city council days, my, um, my family does not call me on Tuesdays. Because they know that I'm usually on the phone most of the day, talking to people and just updating people. That's, that's important for us to do because that's our, that's their tax dollars that are getting spent on all these things. And people always have questions, whether it's as elementary as it can possibly get or expert side as it possibly can get.
Now, are those meetings available to watch online?
Yeah, absolutely. And that's the other side of it. We, you know, I put on there, these are the agendas for both the work session and the regular session. That meetings are always open up, open to the public in three hundred Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard over at the municipal court center. And, um, I also put on there the, um, the YouTube link for it. So people can just go straight there and they can watch it. Yeah, and but, you know, uh, that's a big part of what I wanted to do. I wanted to be a sounding board for every, all the great things that are going on in our community. And if you look at our Facebook page, if you go to Todd Rauk City Council Ward Five, you'll see years, not just the last five years. You'll see several, several years back of just a lot of the promoting on what's going on in, in our city. So your trash schedule, your recycling schedule, you know, when the Veterans Day, you know, speaker, who it's gonna be. We're doing a Freedom Fest this year, so we're gonna have a Veterans Day Parade. We'll put that out. But the great things that our police department, our fire department, everyone's doing. But you can put this out there and you can, you know, lead people to the water, but you can't make them drink. So I know that there are lots of constituents and doing a lot of door knocking that don't have that opportunity or don't have Facebook. Don't use Facebook for that reason or don't wanna use Facebook. So, um, I've, this is all a evolving thing. You know, in twenty twenty, it seemed like, okay, this is great and it's been going gangbusters. But I, while I've been door knocking, some people are like, well, I didn't know that or, uh, you know, I don't use Facebook. I'm all social media for right now. I'm just taking a break, which I can't blame them. So what we did is, um, taken my face, my, um, website, which is toddrauqforopalika.com. And four as the number four. And, um, putting echoing everything on there so people can just go straight to our website. And it's got the agendas, we've been tinkering with it. Um, I'm trying to get the, how I want it to look. And without taking away from any of the other informational side of it. But, um, putting the agendas on there, we've got the forums on there right now for all four of the, the forums or meet and greets for the candidates. And so we're using that as an additional platform. The other side is what can I do as a councilman to make sure that I'm bringing the word to the people? And not just, just to you as we're meeting in public or at an event or at a restaurant or grocery store, but how can I bring it to your mailbox? So, um, when I first got elected, I sent a Christmas card to every single constituent. Um, you should have gotten one. Had my, well, it's twenty twenty, so I don't blame you, but I'm gonna hold you to something else. So we sent a Christmas card to let everyone know who I was, what my email was, what my phone number was. And to thank everyone for, you know, they participate in the election, thank you. But this, I am your new city councilman, here's my information. And we got a lot of reception from that. People calling me, hey, I just want you to have my number or, hey, this is an ongoing issue. I just want you to be aware of it. And it, it's working and I save everyone's numbers usually by their address or issue or, you know, whatever. And I, it's how I get to know a lot of the names and the passions and the issues. And the problems that people are experiencing in a day to day life. But on top of that, in twenty twenty-two, we redistricted our lines for the city government. And we do that after every single census. So we'll do it again after twenty and twenty thirty. But, um, when we redistricted those lines, Opalika is the largest geographically, north to south. And, uh, on the eastern side, which y'all in the south in Fox Chase. So, um, we have a lot of area for potential and growth and, you know, our lines change a lot in Ward Five. And I saw the potential for that. So after we negotiated and, and, and voted on what the lines were gonna be. And, um, last December, I sent everyone a, another Christmas card, every single constituent. Some constituents were new, some constituents, constituents were remaining. And I did that for a couple of reasons. One, I wanted to make sure they understand who I was, what my name was, what I looked like and had my information. The other side of it, I wanted them to know that we had, we had been redistricting if they, a lot of people don't pay attention to that. But that I wanted them to be aware of the process and that they were changed into this other ward. And that's important because when we're looking at these lines, we try to do it to where if you're voting in a state or federal election. That your municipal location is still the same as that. But they don't always match up perfectly and as hard as we try and as much as we might, it's just, it's always gonna be different in some areas. So I always want every single vote to count. Uh, I'm, I'm someone who lost by six votes in twenty eighteen when I ran for state house, so I know how crucial that is. So I wanted everyone to know what their voting location was and how they could register to vote. So we had a little QR code on there, tried to fit as much as we could into a Christmas card. But, um, every resident got that, including yourself. And it's important because those are, those are like the extra ways. The extra ways that I go as a city councilman to make sure that my constituents are the most informed. And what we're seeing right now with what the city's putting out and what we're talking about is people are now aware of some of these ward line changes. And I know that, you know, when I'm door knocking and I'm telling people, especially in, you know, the Westridge neighborhood. Catherine Drive, Part of Douglas Street, um, Lisbon, the, I tried to let them know that they are now in Ward Five. They were in Ward Two, but they're now in Ward Five and they're gonna be voting at the Sportsplex, which is gonna be different from their state and federal elections. So I wanna make sure that they know about it. So, and we're, we're trying to tell as many people as possible, cause not many people, I've noticed, went to the QR code. So, um, but that's also, you know, you're leading a horse to water. And, and just wanting people to, to make sure that they understand and are receptive to it. So I say all that, you know, to, to focus on the point that as constituents and as residents. The communication between our, your local elected leaders is so crucial and it's so important. Because sometimes it impacts the way that your vote counts. So if someone goes into a, another polling place and tries voting at Jeter when they do live in Ward Five. That vote more likely will not, it will not count. I mean, even if they do provisional. So we try to cut down on that as much as possible, but as we're navigating this through, you know, with the administration right now. And trying to get as much information out there as possible. I do have a little bit of comfort to know, like, I, I thought ahead and, and that's what, that's what I bring as a councilman. And, and kind of an understanding is what do I want? I'm the councilman that I would want my councilman to be like. I represent the people I would want to be represented. And I'm, I inform people the way that I would like to be informed and I love to be informed. I can never ask too many questions. But this opportunity, I get to do it for the people. So, um, I try to be as in, as inclusive, as equitable, as, as possible. To make sure that everyone has the same opportunity to know how, who I am, what I, what I'm about. And how their government is working for them.
Do you have any questions? My last question will be, um, how many hours a week do you think you spend on council work?
A lot, a lot, a lot. I, I'll, I'll be honest. I mean, you know, right now, it's, it's around the clock. I mean, of course, when you run in for office, because it's important. I had a lady who showed up to city council probably about a month ago and she was, um, there was a water issue that she was complaining about. But, um, and she looked at me and she said, she's in Ward Five, she looked at me and she said, I called you, you were in Utah. And I was, I was at an urgent care clinic, cause I, I got sick while I was, um, uh, on, in Utah. And, um, I, while I was sitting there in urgent care, I was talking to her and she was just telling me about all this. And no matter where I'm at, yeah, I want people to always reach me. So it's, but it also doesn't, it, it, there are no limitations on the hours. I know that's probably unhealthy. But the, I know that if I needed to reach my council member, and usually it's a last resort. I wanna be your first call, but sometimes it's a last resort. If you can't get ahold of me at that point, then, um. I, I know how devastating that can be. There's a couple of things I wanna add in here. The, a big thing of what we do and how we work as, as a city is all like still evolving. So a lot of what I pride myself on and the way that I grade myself is the way that I help constituents. And how, how involved and how much of an advocate I can be and making sure that I'm not just asking the questions that I think to be asked, needs to be asked. I'm asking what, asking the questions that they want to be asked, because their needs are paramount, more than anything. And the thing that I've ran into, not ran into, but I've experienced throughout my first term is, you know. The way that some issues have been solved or handled, some people are, are not as happy. There's a gentleman who lives out on Old Columbus Road and he had two issues. One, that a sign. The sign for three ninety-one needed to be included about a mile down the road, because we incorporated a lot of land there. And, um, but on the, on the right side of the road, it ends right at Deer Run. And so I asked for a sign to be put out there and they put a second sign right out next to the other one, the first one, right there, right there. And the other issue he had was there's a fire hydrant out there that just, it just continually goes and goes and goes. And I've asked two fire chiefs this, both Chief Prather and Chief Boyd. And, um, the, it's an outlet, it's the end of a line. And it's an easy way for them just to, you know, any of the relief and the valves and it just continually goes. And people, you know, that's a waste of water and everything, but the, the answer that I got has, you know, is, I'm not a firefighter, I'm not a fire chief. If this is what they need and how it is, then at least we know a little bit more into it. But I, I was out there, I was responsive, I took pictures, I asked questions. And I understand that some people are, you know, not happy about how, you know, the, the way it was solved. But I'm confident in the way that I represent our people in Ward Five. Because the, the constituent meetings that we have with the fire department, police department, and EMA. And, and just general sit down in your kitchen, ask me, you know, whatever you'd like. It's, it's a big part of who we are as, as a city, because I'm an outsider from here. You know, my wife and I came here about twenty years ago. And to be a part of our community and has worked as, as hard as we have worked. We've also benefited from it the same way. And I tell people, you get out of Opalika what you put into it. And if you're consistent and if you're involved and you're just accessible and wanna be informed, those opportunities are there. So I always tell people that, um, the, I, I am a receptive council member. And I'm comfortable with, you know, getting blamed about, on things, but I always have the highest standard with the way that I grade myself. As an elected leader with how I respond to people, because I know how necessary it is. And I know how helpless it can feel when you don't have anyone on your side in government. You need an advocate. You shouldn't always have to, you know, be able to, you know, do things yourself. But having that advocates, having someone else that's going to stand beside you and, and willing to fight these issues are important. Because whenever a railroad tried, um, closing a street, uh, closing a railroad crossing. We got, you know, I went out there and I door knocked on sixty-eight, um, doors and I got the neighborhood and they came to city council, ten people did. And they lobbied with me to keep this railroad crossing open because it was on Melton Avenue. Because it was one of those areas where it was safety concerns, you know. An ambulance would be able to get across that railroad quicker and get to the house rather than going even two, three minutes around the other side. And together we were able to do it and keep it open. And it's, are those times where I get goosebumps, you know, where I'm, I'm just to know. That I get to advocate for these people and I get to be on their side, whether it's good or bad. Or it's a, it's a tough issue or, you know, it's something that's ongoing. The, the pride that I have, the pride that I take in the work and the responsiveness that I give my constituents. Is, is on the highest level. And the other side of it is, I, I know that there's a lot going on. And there's a lot of voices and it, there's only so much that we can kind of be tuned into, cause we hear a lot from the state and federal side. But everything, everything is local. I know that I get frustrated about this or that, it happens nationally, just in the national backdrop. But when I look at our community and what we're building and the opportunities. That are growing and continue to grow, you know, in twenty twenty, we didn't have a, a young professionals organization. And now we do and it is big. It's a great organization. These are people who wanna get ingrained in our community and become more active to become the future leaders. Um, so that's, I always ask, tell people, one, you know, no matter who your city council member is, make sure you look them. So that's, I always ask, tell people, one, you know, no matter who your city council member is, make sure you look them up on Facebook. You go to their Facebook page. And you at least get connected and just like or follow it. Because it's going to be beneficial whenever it comes time that you're going to need it. And the other side of it is, is making sure that we are. Always continually growing our leaders in the community. I'm involved in Lee County Young Leaders. I was on the twenty under forty board for six years. And I'm involved in other organizations throughout the state that brings leaders here. But also grows our local leaders. The Lee County Young Leaders Program, it through the chamber is juniors and seniors in high school, mainly juniors. But taking them to every aspect of our community and really letting them know and grow and learn. Because you never know when the next city engineer is going to come around or the next city planner is going to get inspired. Or the next future mayor is going to decide at a young age, that's what I want to do. And we partner, you know, big part of what I do on my council, on council is using my position to best put our community. In a situation where we can create and better leaders, you know, Ron, Mayor Ron Anders and I, we do a local government day. And where we take these students all around Lee County to Smith Station, to Auburn, to Opalika. And let them see for themselves how their city is working and protecting them and serving them. So as, as older and as we get older and as our city grows and ebbs and flows. I just ask people to always be, never stop recommending someone for. The board at the museum or Opalika Main Street, or if you see anyone aspiring to a certain position or. You know, wanting to get involved in their community and if you have any opportunity or any way that you can help be that foot in the door for them. I always tell people to please, please, please take that opportunity. My very first board in Opalika was the museum. Serving on the museum board. Ginger Stern is who recommended me that, for that. I talked to her today. And I always, I always treasure that. Because it was the best way for me to get involved and it really got me thinking more. Community wise and which led to me working at the community foundation and it just provided. It quadrupled in its value as one recommendation. Turning into someone who's now serves on city council and gets to affect more change in their community.
That museum's a hidden gem too. There's a lot of cool stuff in there people aren't aware of.
I, I take every single time that someone comes to Opalika, I take them to the Museum of East Alabama. And just get to show them around and. I mean, we have two Medal of Honor recipients from Opalika and their stories and it's the growth and the Cowboys. There's so much there. So if you haven't went. You need to go. And if you haven't been in a while, you need to go back.
Yeah, the stuff from when we had the P O W camp is the thing. That's what I find the most fascinating.
Yeah, I mean, people don't know that we had a P O W camp in Opalika. So it's, and the art that we have there and people have done such a great job on preserving that history. It just, it just speaks to the caliber of citizens that we have and residents we have. You know, if you ever get the opportunity Dave, and you can go up to the attic of the museum, it used to be.
I didn't know there was an attic.
Well, I don't know if they let people go up there normally, but the, I always, they do because they've got a fire pole up there. So they let kids, I, I, I don't go down it, but the, it's, it's a great way to see. How much more history we have in there. It was kind of cluttered before, but Glenn Buxton and the, and the board, they got with the sheriff's department, got some inmates. And they worked tirelessly to make sure it's organized, but. We have every single newspaper. I went up there a couple of years ago and I was doing some history research for Kiwanis. And I looked at what did the paper look like? On November twenty third of nineteen sixty three. The day after JFK was shot, what were they saying in Opalika? And I mean, that history's up there. So, and it goes back, I mean, a hundred years. So there's, there's so many records. There's a. There is a frame that has a, it's a joke that was a. Like a resolution for banishment for one of the governors who came from Opalika. So they have that up there and they don't show it just because it's kind of like. It's a, it's a, it's a joke, but just to see it and just know that, that, you know, the men that laughed at that when that was presented and. It's, it's our responsibility from everyone to, you know, carry that forward and, and keep, keep going on because. You know, one day, you know, our picture is going to be in a museum, hopefully, you know, right?
It's true. Well, I appreciate the opportunity to chat.
Thanks so much, Dave.